It is now six fourteen. We will reconvene our.
Yes, starting with Jane Stuckerman from the Houston Chronicle. There's Jane back. We can see the top of your hand. We can't see you, okay. And Jane's with the Houston Chronicle. Andrew Christman is Community Impact. Andrew, welcome. And I want to welcome tonight Professor Fay Lee, who is the Cyfair Faculty Senate Vice President. Is she? Yeah, there she is right there. She's sitting in. She's sitting in for Rebecca. And let's see, Donna Willingham and the music faculty for their performance. Where's Donna? Before the board meeting, so thank you. And you're going to do something later, okay. And I want to call up Chief Willingham. We have a special honor tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Head, Board. I'd like to call up Captain Sandra. Oh, she's here already. So intuitive. Very good. So Captain Sandra Yocum has served her community as a police officer for thirty-two years, the last six of which have been with Lone Star College. Her first five years here, she served as University Park Campus Commander. And over the past year, she has served as my Chief of Staff. In the three years that the Police Department has had this particular award, she has been recognized by the department members two times as the Supervisor of the Year. Also in attendance today is her husband, Mike Yocum, who is a thirty-two-year veteran of Precinct Five Constable's Office, and her daughter Brittany, who is a nursing student at Wharton County, and her grandkids are all here in attendance too. So I'd like to share with you what happened on November eleventh. On November eleventh of 2018, Lone Star College Police Officers from the Tomball Division responded to a report of a young male who ran from the LSC Tomball Library after telling his grandmother he was planning to kill himself. The young man was just twenty years old and suffering from a mental health crisis. Uniformed officers located the young man in hiding in the woods along the Tomball Campus entrance. He was deep in the woods and officers were not able to approach him without aggravating him. He was holding a knife to his throat. If an officer approached, he pressed the knife further into his throat and became even more incensed. Due to the density of the woods, we were unable to deploy less lethal tools to safely subdue him. Captain Sandra Yocum, in plainclothes, responded to the scene from the office of the chief at Esso University Park. She was able to develop a rapport with the young man while talking to him from outside the woods. Eventually, she earned his trust, and he allowed her to enter the woods to talk to him up close. Keep in mind, he was still holding a knife, but now Captain Yocum was within immediate-striking distance herself. She did not have any weapons out in order to continue to gain his confidence and resolve the situation peacefully. After continued discussion, the young man eventually put down his knife and walked out of the woods with Captain Yocum's arms around him. He boarded an ambulance and was transported to the hospital for evaluation. Captain Yocum went with him and his mother and helped them through the process. Captain Yocum continued to stay in touch with the family. And this young man has now received the assistance needed and is on stabilizing medication and is considering returning to school. The LSC Police Medal of Valor may be presented to any employee who exhibits unusual courage in performance of his or her duties. This situation has to be one of unusual danger to the employee, and the employee has to be aware of the hazard. Captain Yocum, without regard for her own safety, went above and beyond the call of duty that day. She sacrificed her own well-being to care for another. Her concern, kindness, and courage made a difference in that young man's life, possibly even saving it. Her actions that day represent the very best of Lone Star College and the Lone Star College Police Department. It's my honor to award Captain Sandra Yocum the Lone Star College Police Medal of Valor. Is it all right if we get a picture, sir?
You know, your granddaughter's like stealing the show back.
Chief asked one with the front for the Twitter.
Okay, so in our workshop tonight, we have, I'd like to invite Richard Shaw to come on. You want to add a few words, Mike?
Richard, I'm going to let you introduce yourself and tell us why you're here.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, members of the Lone Star College Board and Chancellor Stephen Head. Good to see you again. I'm Richard Shaw, and I'm a member of the Gulf Coast Workforce Board. We are currently a board of some thirty-eight individuals appointed by governmental entities from the thirteen-county area, including the city of Houston. We are one of twenty-eight workforce boards in Texas, and we operate largely on federal funds through the Workforce Investment Act. And under this act, there are regional workforce boards all over the country. And I happen to represent labor on that board, appointed from the city of Houston, and I've been on the board since nineteen ninety-seven. And so we sit at the board level doing workforce work, and meanwhile, you guys are doing workforce development work because we're all partners in this. And I wanted to speak briefly to some of our activities that we've done just recently that are significant for you and Lone Star College and what you're trying to do here. We have a board budget of a little over three hundred and seven million dollars. And we've allocated that budget according to our priorities that we've set for ourselves. Over two hundred, over two hundred and sixteen million dollars of that goes to financial aid and job training. So we send students to Lone Star here for job training. And we target industries with high skill, high-growth occupations. And this is all determined from the Texas Workforce Commission. So all in all, we're targeting occupations in forty-seven industries and about 1.5 million jobs, or about forty-one percent of our total employment in our thirteen-county area. Those are what we target with our funds. We spend another fifty-three million dollars and some change on thirty-seven career offices over thirteen counties. We spend another seventeen million dollars plus for adult education. And then we have another ten million we spend for employer services, where we do outreach to employers and work with employers to become partners in what we're trying to do. And all this is operated under the auspices of the Houston Gulf Coast Regional Council, or HGCAC, as most of us call it that. At our last February board meeting, we adopted a strategic plan, and we came up with four goals. One was, we want more competitive employers. Two, a better educated workforce. Three, more and better jobs. And four, higher wages. And around that plan, we have various data sources that we judge ourselves against, whether, you know, how well we did or where we need to improve. We look at regional economic output, early childhood readiness, grade-level reading and math attainment, graduation rates in our schools, English language learners, and so forth. Soon, we will be issuing our next report card. And just as Lone Star College issues report cards to its students, and those report cards are used as a tool to help that student improve their work and judge what they were doing, we use ours as a tool to gauge the region's competitiveness in relation to similar metropolitan areas across the United States. So in 2019, this year, we will be releasing our sixth update, and our last report card was issued in 2015. And we have six categories that we look at when we judge ourselves. We look at macroeconomy and industrial dynamics, employment and unemployment, labor force composition, income, wealth, and poverty, quality of life and educational achievement, and investment. So those are the six areas that we look at. And we compare ourselves to Atlanta, Dallas, Denver, Miami, San Antonio, San Diego, Seattle, and Phoenix. So those are the cities that we compare ourselves against. And you might recall that since 2015, and now we had an energy downturn in our gas and oil sector. And so we have some different grades that we're, you know, a little disappointed in at this point. Now, these are grades we gave ourselves. Currently, we gave ourselves three Bs, macroeconomy, labor force composition, quality of life, and three Cs in unemployment, employment, income, wealth, and poverty, and educational attainment and investment. And in those two categories, previously, we had As, because I tell you, we were booming up until that point. Y'all remember that. And we had two areas that went from an A to a B, then we had another area in employment and unemployment that we went from an A to a C because of those layoffs. One of the things that we're concerned about with this upcoming data that we have, we're very concerned that our economy still remains largely tied to the gas and oil sector. And, you know, that's good news if we're booming, but that's bad news if we're not booming. And so we would like to see more diversification in our sector. The Texas Higher Education and Coordinating Board came up with a sixty-thirty plan, where they want sixty percent of Texans between the ages of twenty-five and thirty-four to hold a certificate or a degree by 2030. So that's been kind of a statewide goal, sixty percent of Texans holding some kind of a certificate or a degree by 2030. They felt that that was a requirement in order to meet the workforce needs of our region and generally of the state. Right now, we have a C in educational, we gave ourselves a C in educational achievement and investment because our high school-adjusted graduation rate is seventy-eight percent. What we do is we look at all the schools in the region. We look at who was there in the ninth grade and who was there in the twelfth grade. And we came up with a seventy-eight percent. We got to do better. The other area that we went down in our grading on was investment in education. And we all know the legislature's in session, and we hope that something's going to be done there a little bit different because that's going to be critical for our region to get to that sixty-thirty goal. In the next month or so, we're going to be issuing our report card. And just as we did last time, we had regional meetings, and we'll let you know because we went around the region, introduced what was in the report card, and then talked to regional leaders. We had elected leaders. We had boards. We had educators to help us figure out what we need to be doing as a board to improve our marking. So we'll be doing that in the next coming months. I also forwarded a copy of our workforce board agenda from the February meeting to you, and you'll be getting that. And that has a lot more information than I was going to give you. Otherwise, I would have been up here for about three hours tonight. Wasn't going to do that to you.
Well, most people know.
Wasn't going to do that. So that said, I want to thank you for allowing me to appear before you this evening. I hope I was informative. I want to thank you for your work in guiding the Lone Star College system and in making it one of our premier college systems. And I really believe that we're all in this workforce development together, and we all know that. And thank you very much.
Well, any questions?
Sorry, I guess. Now I'm turned on. Okay. So I'm curious, since we are one, I believe we're the third or fourth largest metropolitan statistical area, I'll get it out. Why did we choose to compare ourselves to the regions that you named?
Those cities I named, we tried to pick cities that were like us somewhat in geography and demographics. And they're not exactly like us, but we tried to pick cities that we thought were facing some of the same challenges we were facing. And then we added to this year that we didn't have before. So it was an arbitrary thing, but that's what we were trying to do.
Richard, I have a question.
Sure.
I think on your report card, you said in the completion, high school completion rate, that you gave yourselves a grade of seventy-eight.
We had a seventy-eight completion rate.
Well, you gave yourself a C.
Yeah.
Okay. What would an A look like?
Well, I think an A would look like something ninety or better. I was a school teacher. And again, an A, you had to be ninety or better. And so I would think we should be. We have some schools, high schools, that are graduating over ninety percent of their students, so we know it can be done. But that would be what we want to see, a ninety or better. You're always going to have a few kids that you miss.
Get it later, yeah.
But seventy-eight, that was an average for the region because I can take you to some schools where you're looking at a forty-five percent graduation rate. And I can take you to schools where you're looking at a ninety-eight graduation rate.
Well, that's a good goal, ninety percent. Great.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why are we not pursuing the petrochemical boom? The petrochemical industry is due to all the crack gas.
Oh, well, we are. That's in our categories for jobs.
Okay.
And it's still a huge job market, and it's part of the jobs that we're trying to train people for. But my reference to that was when all the layoffs came in that sector, it drove everything down. And we need to diversify more. We need to be relying on something more than just oil and gas. Houston's done a lot better. Some of you all remember the eighties. I do. We've done a lot better. And we're still training and pursuing jobs in those sectors. But we just need to diversify.
So have you set a goal for the petrochemical industry, which?
No, we're, it's probably safe to say we're in the business of trying to find, trying to figure out what kind of jobs they want people, train people for, and getting those people to those jobs.
The Technology Center that's in Kingwood is a prime example of what they're looking for.
And you guys are doing some of that work, and HCC's doing some of it, and the San Jose Central College is doing some of that work as well. It's good work. And when you look at the packet, there's something, there's a part of the packet called Where the Jobs Are, which is kind of interesting because you see where the market is. And so when people come to us and they want us to give them financial aid, we don't give them financial aid unless they're in one of those areas where the jobs are and where there's a need. And so that's where we are. And we have a job, a wage standard, so we're not training people to work in fast food. We're training people to work more technical careers and the kind of training they're going to get at a college like this.
We work pretty closely with Workforce Solutions. We're quite active with that, so thank you for your help with that.
That's our brand name. I should have said that, Workforce Solutions. But that's our branding name. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you.
Okay, board members, at this point, we need to approve, get a motion for approval of the minutes of February seventh, two thousand nineteen. Second. Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we adopted the minutes of our February seventh workshop and regular meeting. There was one individual who was absent, so Ken, if you would abstain because you weren't present for that meeting. That was last month's meeting. So everybody else, all those in favor of adopting those minutes, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? By the same sign, the motion passed. Okay, at this point, we need a motion to approve our February twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen board retreat, a motion and a second.
Some more?
What date was our retreat? Was it twenty-second? Okay, so it's wrong. I have to change it. Okay, I'm sorry. We need a motion for the February twenty-second, two thousand nineteen board retreat.
That one too. I said that one too.
Yeah.
Still moved.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we adopted board retreat minutes. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Chancellor, any special reports or announcements?
Yeah, one, well, I've got a couple of them. First of all, I'd like to, you want to put the... I'd like to congratulate Trustee Miriam Saldivar on receiving the two thousand nineteen Latino Leader and Educational Award during the Solo Mujeres Awards today, which is only female, right? Am I close on that pronunciation? Okay, thank you. So Shaw Arlon nominated her, and that's her in the middle. So congratulations and thank you, Shaw.
I want to share this award with my fellow women colleagues here. I think it's not only this week, but the whole entire month is like the International Women's, you know, Day Month. And so all the women working here at Lone Star College, all the president women, our trustees, congratulations. This is your month.
So I've got a couple of other updates from the legislature and board. Some of those I've sent to you, but just... So our priorities were, first of all, hurricane relief funding that is there in the supplemental budget. And so for the rest of you, there's really two budgets. One's the supplemental budget, which is everything that occurred from the last session up until the new budget is approved. And part of that was the hurricane funding. And so right now, the House has approved, we asked for fifteen million. The House budget has thirteen point one. We believe the Senate budget will have fifteen million in there. So we're hoping to have some hurricane relief money, which would help. We're still, you'll talk a little bit about FEMA, like very little because we don't have that much to say about FEMA in a minute. But so we're combining that with our insurance, but we have some real supporters in the legislature who know our situation. We've been talking with every one of our state reps and state senators, and they know who we are. They know what our situation is. And that's just not one person doing that. It's board members telling them that. It's our presidents and the staff, and they know. They just keep up with events at Lone Star. So the second thing is, we've been working on the general allocation for community colleges. And the ask was a hundred and forty-four million dollars for the biennium, which would be seventy-two, seventy-two million a biennium. We normally get nine or ten percent of that. What's complicating a little bit of this year is we're still not sure what the tax revenue bill looks like. Whether, it started out at two point five, and there's some negotiations about, I don't, anywhere from two point fives to up to six. I just don't know. The discussions have been, if they keep it at a low level, then they might supplement the budgets, the real budgets, with additional money to make us whole, whatever whole means. And so we are prepared in our budget preparation, and we've shared this with the board already. We are prepared for whatever number that comes out. I just don't know right now. I think it's going to be four, given, well, what we were told yesterday, it'll be between two point five and, or yeah, two point five and four. It depends on who you talk to. And then we go down on the other side of the aisle, and they say, well, it's going to be around six. So I don't know. I think it's going to be somewhere in the middle is what I think. We're prepared for it, though, either way. And some really good news, we have the program that we've been working on over, we already have at Tomball that you may remember, Trustee Holsey went to the meeting. We were all in it, several of us. We came back from that conference, and then we created the Life Path Program at Tomball, and then we're creating it at Montgomery. We actually have some legislation that's been presented by Representative Oliverson that would allow us to work with the Coordinating Board to create a... that would, um, allow us to work with the coordinating board to create a degree in life, that we're probably called life skills, but that we get, you get the, you get the point there. So he is behind that. We talked to Senator Creighton yesterday, who is the head of Senate Higher Ed, everything has to go through there, he's in support of it. So we're trying to line up supporters on both sides, so we have some other meet, we have the legislation already, a bill's been submitted. So I'm optimistic about that. And we still have some work to do, a lot of work on the, getting the bill passed and then what that actually means are two different issues, but we're, we're going to work on that with LeAnn and Rebecca and the staff. And the coordinating board is coming around to help us a little bit. The last one is, um, Representative Bell contacted me a couple of weeks ago and asked if we would help with an emergency management program and a degree program, uh, for the national, for the Texas Guard, for the Texas Guard. So the governor would like to double the size of the guard from two thousand to five thousand, so he submitted a bill. And, um, we've been working with him to put the pieces together, met with him a couple of times, and he wants a competency-based education bill. There are models for that, for, like with the DPS and some of the military that we have, and so we're working on that. We're trying to get, the bill's already been submitted, we're working with the coordinating board over that, we would be the lead college in it, so, um, we can do it. We've been talking with the coordinating board, we can do it. There's a lot of work that goes on with that to get there, but, um, like, I was corresponding with him today, we had some little tweaks in the legislation, so there's a lot of good things going on. I'm very optimistic about what's going to happen, I'm realistic, but I'm also thinking that something good's going to happen. The mood is, uh, they want to, uh, provide funding for education, for public education, and then the community colleges and the universities, so there is a realization that education's really the key to Texas economy over the long term, so we'll see. But there's a lot of work going on up there, a lot of good work. So, and thank you for all your help. There's a lot of people working on this with us, it's not, um, including some of the board members who've been in touch with, um, I know, because they've been telling me that you've talked to them and so they know what the situation is, so. It also helps, Armando Wally has, uh, been very supportive, and it, it helps to have one of his staff people here, who just received an award, it helps a lot, but he was already, he was one of our supporters anyway, but it just, um, it helped, yeah, he was, yeah, but still, it helps, there's not, there's no such thing as too much support, so, anyway, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
Good evening. So, Dr. Smith, Dr. Head, and members of the board, tonight I'm going to speak briefly about our faculty professional development that occurs at each of the colleges. Uh, and, but before I get into the specifics, I want to remind us of the results pyramid that we use for our culture work here at Lone Star. That's the idea that our experiences, uh, create beliefs and beliefs drive actions, actions drive results. And so our cultural beliefs are the ones that lead us to the kind of results that we want to achieve at Lone Star. So, before I go into the professional development piece, I want you to imagine for just a minute that you're a student and you're perhaps a student that didn't have a parent who went to college. You may have even been told you're not college material. You are an unbelieving student, that college is not for you. So for whatever reason, you find yourself deciding to go to Lone Star. And you begin the application process, the financial aid process, and you come up to the college bravely and walk in and the advisor's nice, and the financial aid comes in and your classes are available at times that you need them. And you start to think, maybe I can do this college thing. The first day of class, you're sitting in the classroom, teacher's not there yet, you're looking around and wondering, what the heck have I done? Why am I here? I guarantee there are students in our classrooms who think that every day, especially the first day. So what happens the moment a faculty member walks in that classroom, the very first day is crucial. Because whatever that faculty member does next is either going to affirm a belief that they don't belong and we may never see that student again, or it's going to change a belief that maybe, yes, I can do college. So, the experiences our faculty create in the classroom are going to drive the beliefs our students hold, that lead our students to take actions, that lead to the kind of results that we want. We want them to finish, we want them to graduate, we want them to pursue their education. For faculty to be able to create those kind of experiences, it's important that we invest in the professional development side of what we do. And so that's one I want to share a little bit with you tonight. Uh, there's a whole lot more going on than what I'm going to show you, but we just pulled examples from each college. So Cy Fair, I won't read all of this to you, has a teaching and learning symposium when each semester. Uh, you can see here, uh, the way each of these slides will show is what the event is, the attendance, the purpose, the target audience, and then a quote from a faculty member who participated in the event. So you can see here that this faculty member says that they gained a new belief about the impact of a specific bill and realized their role in supporting this important initiative. At Kingwood, we've known now, with their incredible effort to overcome with Harvey, that they were able to convert six hundred and forty face-to-face courses to online classes. They probably faced some beliefs among faculty that didn't want to do online, but through this experience, faculty developed a belief that they could deliver an online course, and they did so. At Montgomery, you can see here Professional Development Week, February eighteenth through the twenty-second, a hundred and five people participated. This is a week where they have different opportunities for different types of professional development. But as you can see from the quote, the beliefs and awareness that was developed about implicit bias and its impact, which is a direct impact in the classroom. North Harris has a faculty institute and adjunct boot camp. You can see the number of participants, the attendance and the, and the audience, intended audience. The lightbulb moment is that my instructional, instruction will be greatly improved by seeing what other faculty members are doing. To me, that says they developed a belief about learning from each other and the power of doing so. At Tom Ball, we've instituted what we call Instructional Initiative Fridays, we've been in a little over a year now, where three Fridays a semester are dedicated to professional development, moving projects forward meetings. We've had a lot of guest speakers, um, colleagues from chancellor's cabinet come in and actually speak to us if there was an important topic that needed to be covered. This experience helps faculty develop the belief that their contributions matter and that connecting with each other is important. University Park had a, recently a successful annual spring development day on a Saturday. This experience helps faculty develop the belief that their own classes can be improved by sharing best practices with each other. All of that, then taken together, leads to extraordinary results for the students, for the faculty, and for the college. For students, when students believe they can, there's a greater likelihood that they'll persist and that they'll complete. When faculty believe in their students and believe that they have a tremendous influence and impact on that student, the faculty are successful. And then Lone Star succeeds, as evidenced by being designated as a great college to work for. And also I want to add, uh, in comparison to some other institutions, about twelve hundred of them, that our attrition rate is so much lower significantly by about half than some other two-year and four-year institutions. I think that's an extraordinary result, uh, evidenced by the, the experiences we're creating for our faculty and for our students and the beliefs that are informed by both. And so I have no idea how long that took, but it felt really short, so if you have any questions for me, I'm, I'm happy to answer them.
While you're there, um, I should have said this already, but LeAnn's book came out. You want to give us a...
Sure.
You, you're fine on the time. You were fine, let me put it that way.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, for those of you who may not be aware, we worked, collaborated on a book with a faculty member from our college and, and trustee Throwbridge actually contributed some student stories for us. And it's, um, the title is Complete the Agenda in Higher Education: Challenge Beliefs About Student Success. And the argument is that in our completion agenda efforts to help more students finish, that colleges nationally over the last ten years have lived at the top of the results pyramid, that the actions that we've taken have only been actions. And they've been good. We've got pathways, we've got new policies, new processes, and now ten years later, colleges are better. But our completion rates have not improved significantly at all. So, the argument in the book is that it's time to do the harder lift, create experiences for students that help change their beliefs. Because if a student doesn't believe they can belong, the pathway is only going to take them so far. And so throughout the book, we developed beliefs around grit, growth mindset, resilience, instinct, tenacity, and based on our partnership with Paul Stoltz that we've had at Tom Ball for several years. Partners in Leadership, uh, the results pyramid, uh, also contributed, they gave me, gave us the rights to use that in the book as the theoretical framework. And so our challenge is, community colleges, it's time to start changing student beliefs if we really, really, really want to change our completion rates. And, uh, so far, we've sold a hundred and fifty without even marketing it yet, so I'm encouraged by that. Uh, but it's a strong message.
We'll make sure the board has a copy, we're, you know, we need, you were supposed to give me the, so we could buy some, so we can give them away.
Okay, I'll email you, thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
On the workshops that you talked about.
Mm-hmm.
Do all of the people attend those or is it voluntary? Is it mandatory or voluntary that they attend?
I think it varies depending on what the event is. There are some that, you know, you have to be here, uh, speaking for Tom Ball, the Instructional Initiative Friday is voluntary, uh, but the attendance has been phenomenal. And what's interesting is that, once people experience that as, as productive, they form a belief that this is something I need to invest my time in, and then we're finding more people come and participate.
Great. So, so our presentation tonight, though, I know she's talking about that book, but, um, I'm always very proud when I go places, I, what I meant to tell you when we talked to our legislators, nearly every single one of them that we went to said, oh yeah, I know about your college. My Valerie Swanson's four children all went to Lone Star. Uh, John Rosenthal, the newly elected, was starting to tell him about the college, and he said, he held up his hand and said, my daughter went to Cy Fair, best thing I ever did. So they know about us, but what they know about is the experience that they had at the college. And I, I like your focus on the students and the employees and all that adds up, so, um, I'm very proud of the work that our colleges do. That's, you know, we can set policies and procedures and help with the infrastructure here at the system level, but they, you have to do the work down, I mean, we're working, believe me, we work up here, but, uh, the colleges are the ones that where the students get that level that makes the difference in their lives, so, thank you.
Change those beliefs.
Thank all of you.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
Good job.
Thank you.
Dr. Willingham, you're up. You were here a few months ago, weren't you?
She said you were here a couple of months ago.
I was.
Okay. Good, welcome back.
I threw the short straw again.
No, welcome back, okay.
Dr. Smith and Dr. Head and Board and all the other guests here tonight, I'm Donna Willingham and I'm faculty senate president at Tom Ball, but I'm faculty first. And this is just a place of service for me for two years and I am, um, very excited to present to you a special program and a look at our music programs at all of our colleges. So often we look at academics very strong and grants and things that go with that, and sometimes our fine arts get kind of pushed to the side, and I felt like tonight would be a good night for us to focus on our fine arts and some of the things that we're doing there, because I think you'll be pretty amazed at all the amazing things that are happening at our colleges. So we're going to spotlight those for you tonight. I hope that you enjoyed the cellist that played as you came in, uh, he'll be introduced to you later. And we've got students that are here tonight and our directors that came tonight, and we'll introduce you, uh, to those at the end. Am I the one turning this? I guess I am. Am I the one doing this? I'm not that good with technology, I'm, I'm past that, I'm past that age, I'm sorry.
You're doing fine.
I do the, I'll do the best, this would embarrass my children so much if they, if they knew what I just did, said, am I turning this? So first of all, we'll start with Lone Star College Cy Fair and, uh, the music ensembles that they have there. They have a concert choir, chamber singers, jazz ensemble, symphony orchestra, and string ensemble. They participate in all-state choir and all-state band competitions, they give honors credit for special classes and projects, uh, students have the opportunity to perform with guest artists, and they have a composer's club which sponsors an annual contemporary music festival and monthly fine art showcase cases. And I'll stop here to say that when I contacted and reached out to all of these directors and said I would like to spotlight the music programs at the board, they were, of course, very thrilled for this opportunity to, um, get this exposure, but I said I need you to send me some information for my presentation, and they sent about this much information. And I said in my email, I have about five to seven minutes, but they sent this amount. So please understand that, that I, I had to be fair, so everybody got five bullet points, but I just tried to pick off the top, the things, and, and there, it's just the very tip of the iceberg of all the things that these directors and these programs actually have going on. At LSC Kingwood, the music ensembles include the jazz ensemble, wind ensemble, King Pops Orchestra Corral, Concert Choir, Eclectic Voices of Kingwood, and the Kingwood Big Band. Uh, this is the part I love the most, most, these ensembles are performed in numerous locations and you can see all of those there, and I am absolutely going to sponsor one of these very soon and going to sign up for sponsorship to Switzerland or Italy or someplace. They're bound to need extra faculty to help out with these, right? Uh, and then they participate also in all-state choir competition, competitions. They host the Kingwood Summer Opera Workshop and they do a Monday Performance Hour, which is free and open to the public, and do six of those each semester. Lone Star College Montgomery are accredited by the National Association of Music and they are an all Steinway School. If you don't know what all Steinway School means, I did not have any clue what that meant. I thought that that was just, sure, awesome, that's cool, but I was told it was really cool. And so it's really cool because all of their pianos are Steinway pianos and that is very significant, so that is very awesome, uh, for Montgomery. They participate in the all-state choir and all-state band competitions, they offer a music field of study and they currently have seventy-five students in that program, which is amazing. They have numerous community partnerships, which all of these do, and, uh, it shows you there what they do with those. In the summer, they have a series of outreach events, including the Montgomery Saxophone Day and the Piano Super Saturday. At North Harris, the ensembles include steel band, symphonic band, three instrumental jazz ensembles, vocal jazz ensemble, and the concert choir. They have guest artists that both perform and teach students in special clinics, as well as all the campuses do. So, because I was picking and choosing for each one, try to just kind of give you an overview, all of the campuses have incredible outreach and community events that they have, hold and free and invite the community to, and they all bring in very amazing, uh, uh, vocal and instrumental, very well-known people. I didn't know any of those names, couldn't pronounce any of them, so I didn't put any of them on here, but, but my music director, Lisa Morales, promised me that all of these people were amazing, so we have very amazing people coming to our colleges and we're very honored to have that. They also participate in the competitions, there's a list of their community events as well, and they host weekly forums on various music-related topics and they invite the, the public to come to those as well. Lone Star College Tom Ball also features guest artists, as I said, they also do honors credit for their, uh, for some of their courses. They have won the Humanities Texas Grant for the last three years. They partner with Tom Ball ISD and do an all choir, uh, all district choir workshop, and then they also hold a music festival that, uh, and invite over twelve hundred students to that music festival each year. University Park is the reason that I'm doing this presentation tonight, because if you'll remember back in November, we had our board meeting over at University Park, remember when we, this room was messed up? And, and the, oh, whatever it was. And, uh, you always laugh at times I'm not expecting. And the, um, and the, the drum, the drum, the drum group, they have a name, I think they're called... I think they're called percussion one, the Texans percussion one. They performed that night, and everybody was pretty wowed by that, and I was pretty wowed by that, and I was like, "Listen, if everybody thinks that's awesome, then let's just look at what everybody does." And so, that was the reason, after hearing them, that we, I thought this would be a good topic. So, they also offer an associative arts and music, and they have master's classes, they do professional audio, audition videos and sound recordings for their students to help them as they go out and audition for different parts. And then they do a professional development course for musicians that teaches them the business of being in music, if you're going to do that professionally and for a career. Last but not least are the list of colleges and music schools that our, our students are accepted to. These are all very significant places, the competition's very tough to get into, these music schools at these universities, and our students go to all of these plus many more, but this is just to give you an overview of what we have, as well as many of them go in to be professional musicians after they finish their educational careers. I would like to introduce our directors that are here with us tonight. Dr. Erin Alon, LSC UP, if you'll stand. And will you introduce your students that are with you tonight?
Sure. You're very happy to be here.
Dr. Head, Dr. Smith, members of the Board, thank you for having us out here. I'd like to introduce our students first. Our cellist, who you heard as you were coming in, is Joshua Lopez. And we have three singers with us tonight as well. We have Jordan Sherrill, Savannah Burr, and Hady Gonzalez. And very quickly, I just wanted to say that while we are the youngest music program, the newest, less than two years old so far, I just, I couldn't miss the opportunity to acknowledge that it's because of our incredible administration at University Park that this program has taken off. We offer forty, over 40 classes, the full AA degree, a huge concert calendar, and I welcome you to pick up a copy of the brochure and come join us for one of those. So, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you and to thank them for that.
Right.
And I did not mention that, that we do have brochures at the front where people sign in. If you would like to take one that shows all the programs, they're going to be at the different locations that are free to the public, and I know that you would want to take a brochure with you in case you could participate or attend any of those. I know that you would enjoy that. Dr. David Faber, Lone Star College, oops, on the wrong screen, North Harris, and he, they are giving a concert tonight, because they work all the time, and so they're giving a, I think that they spend the night at their colleges, that, you know, when they think teachers sleep at the school? I think these music directors really do sleep at the school, because all the things that they do, I'm like, "I don't know when you would go home." But they're at a conference, I mean, at a concert tonight at North Harris, so he was not able to be here tonight. Dr. Brian Harrington from Lone Star College Cy Fair.
Thank the Board for having us this evening. And our student that we brought is one of our vocalists, and a student who will begin studying composition in the fall as well, music composition, Savannah Herrera is here. Thank you.
Dr. Todd Miller from Lone Star College Kingwood.
Good evening, members of the Board, and Dr. Head, thank you for hiring me 23 years ago.
It's hard.
I've had a great run and seen the music program grow from nothing and all these great things we've been able to do. We have two students tonight, Rhianne O'Brien over here, soprano, and Brent McFarland, who is also composition, but he also sings and plays various instruments. Both, I think, are going to North Texas in the fall, and very proud of both of them. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and say Dr. Mark Marado, Lone Star College Montgomery. He also is having a concert tonight, two of the six colleges were doing concerts tonight. And then last, I'll introduce Dr. Lisa Morales from Tom Ball.
Thank you so much for this opportunity, just to share a little bit about what we do in our music programs across the system. My colleagues are delightful, and it's just wonderful to share this evening with them. Deeply appreciative of your support for the fine arts in general and for music programs in particular. Deeply appreciate it, appreciate my president, Dr. Leonette, and all that she does at Tom Ball. So, my students, who I'm very proud of, Sam Eisenberg is singing with us tonight, Jessica Turner, Brianna Moore, Sierra Stutz. Thank you guys so much for being here tonight, and thank you!
So, because I always want to be kind of cutting edge and out there, I said, "Hey, what do you think if we just got a few students from every college and they sang for us?" So, these students showed up at 4:30, and they're so talented that they practiced for about 15 minutes, and they're going to sing together as a choir, and they've only sang together just tonight, and that's how good they are. So, y'all do a good job, because I put myself out there. So, anyway, they're going to perform one song for you, and I hope you enjoy it.
Alton Smith, Ken Lloyd, Art Mario, and yours truly myself. And thanks to Jesse Ayala, did I pronounce his name correctly? He's the Vice Chancellor of Government Relations. He set us up with meetings with a number of US representatives. And he works, he works hard. And I got an appreciation for him during this trip and do appreciate what he did. The representatives we met with are Kevin Brady, Sheila Jackson Lee, Dan Crenshaw, Sylvia Garcia, and Lisa Fletcher. Chancellor Head essentially led the conversation, but it was an active conversation with all participating on topics such as strengthening the Pell Grants, investing in education and workforce development, and Reauthorizing Higher Education Act. And it was, it was a very good meeting. My, my impressions were that it was a worthwhile trip. It was worth the, the time and certainly the, the expenses to go because if you don't stay in front of these people, they forget you soon as you walk out. And from what I understand, Steve, I believe there's been follow-up from Jackson Lee's office and Kevin Brady's office from that meeting, those meetings?
On FEMA, yes.
Yeah. So, you know, it's just going to take follow-up. And I'm sure Jesse's on top of it and you're on top of it to, to keep us in front of them like you do in, in the Texas Legislature. So I, I believe this was a worthwhile and, and, and special thanks to Helen. Now, without Helen, we would have been totally lost and, and we would have gone hungry. And so, I, I just want to say that she is, she is such an angel and a, a person who is a true leader and, and helped us keep on track. So, thank you, Helen.
Good job.
Thank you.
You didn't want to? Go ahead.
I'm disappointed, why does this place come out?
Well, I was not invited. I'm going to talk to them tomorrow about that. You know, they didn't want to see a professional out there.
And you promised us, you were, what, what did you promise us when you finished?
Well, that's eight seventy-five, a concert.
Okay.
Two more years, man. Anybody else on this side? Yes.
I wanted to say that we did participate. I think Dr. Head and Dr. Smith, we were at the ten-year reunion for Brother for Brother, which was at North Harris. And I also had an opportunity to get educated on the new Houston North College. I did go to one of the information sessions at Victory. And, you know, you can read it all day, but to actually hear somebody say and have questions, it means a lot. So, I just wanted to share that.
You know, one of the things on Brothers for Brothers, I didn't know a lot about them, but I learned a lot that night. And a couple of the guys that sponsored this group initially, four, ten years ago, said that all of these guys were knuckleheads.
They were.
Real knuckleheads. And I was completely shocked at the transformation that these, if these guys were knuckleheads, you would not have detected that. You know, I mean, they all have gone on and have led, looks like pretty successful lives. And to me, it shows the value that we can get out of teachers and other staff mentoring folks, encouraging them that they can be something different from what they are. And you tell a person that a lot of times, they will end up different, you know, rather than criticizing and being negative. So, I thought that was really, really, really great.
I wanted to ask Dr. Head one thing. Was that, were you joking or sometimes I can't tell? You have that wit about you, like my husband. You know, I kind of don't know if you're, okay, is he joking or not? Did that guy, did that guy really start a taco stand on campus at North Harris?
Yes, he did.
Oh, okay.
So, the Brother for Brother, for the rest of you, is, it started out to be African-American males. And then now it's expanded to Hispanic males. And then they told me they have a female there, so I'm not quite sure how that works. But, so, it's turned out to be a, and Benny Lambert's not here, but he, he took a group of students to A&amp;M, and they had a similar program. And when he came in to ask me for money, I said, why don't you just do it here? So, he took that and he took it and it, and created the program. And they helped us on everything from developing a dress code at North Harris, AJ McQueen.
I can't remember, the guy from St. Louis?
Yeah, the, the guy, he changed my opinion about dreadlocks. All of us, I mean, he has dreadlocks like down to the middle of his back, but I told him, he, after I met him and talked with him, I decided it was okay, we would hire you if you had dreadlocks. But he helped us put together the dress code, and he's very successfully donated a thousand dollars to the program while we were there now. He gives speeches all over. And it just took from, and they were knuckleheads, Benny Lambert pretty much worked with each one of them, and then Sheldon Moss and Hilton LaSalle, there were a number of people, men and women, that helped with them. But I, I just came away from that thinking, if we keep doing the right thing, it pays off. You may not know it until ten years, but it pays off. So, thank you for showing up.
Those guys are great advocates of Lone Star. And when I saw those guys, I thought about Quentin and things that he's, you know, getting ready to do at the Seventh College. And it works miracles when you have people that are dedicated. Okay. Go ahead, Art.
Thank you. First, I, once, once again, I want to congratulate my friend and colleague, Miriam Saldivar, on that recognition. You're well deserved. She, she really inspires other women and young girls. So, through your work and through your leadership, I think we're going to see, like you said, you never know what, what, how you're going to touch people's life and all that, and you're going to see plenty of that. So, congratulations. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is basically brag about our folks. Career and Education Day was held on Saturday, February sixteenth, at George R. Brown Convention Center. It is a, an organization, is an event sponsored by the Hispanic, Houston Hispanic Forum, and it brings up, brings together students, parents, teachers, to educate or to inform the, the parents of the students, really get them excited about college because it, it targets high school, middle school, and I think this time they had a lot of even elementary kids. So, it, it's a lot, it's a fun event. But the reason, I, some of you know that in a past life, I, I was a, about twenty years ago, but Program Director for a college outreach program at a local university, and I was very involved with that group. An organization that's been around from when I was young, about twenty years ago, I think, when I started being involved, is grown and is very successful. And I like to go to this event because I get to run into folks that I've helped in the past. Like you said, sometimes you don't know ten years ago, hey, you helped me with this, you helped me with that. It's incredible. And as a, I, my company, Metro, you know, we are also very involved. We bring buses and, and police cars and vehicles just to get the kids excited about careers and, and college. And I always like to be the first one to show up there, to set up early, the day before, as soon as they open, I'm, go up there and my people are, are the first ones to arrive. And first of all, because we have a huge bus, it's easier to get in. Well, there was another organization that got there right before me, and they were already setting up. And that was Lone Star College. And I did not know that, and I don't think I knew I was going to be there. So, I, I had to admire that, you know, and they were at, at work. It was North Harris mostly, at the point, right, or? Yeah, and, and then, yes, that first day, I think that's where I saw a, a few of your folks, and then I, next day, everybody was there. It was, it was like a big, beautiful festival with Lone Star College having perhaps the most exciting area, you know? Lot of fun things going on. And I could see in the faces of the young folks and, you know, talking to, to, to the advisors, to teachers, and, so, so I said, and back then, when, when I was, when we would go to these programs, I, I didn't know how much of an impact it would have on folks. And, and just seeing everybody there, so committed, so dedicated to this and having fun, really. I mean, I know that, I know, I mean, I hesitate to mention names because there were so many people, everybody was there, but, but thank you, Dr. Fernandez Napoles for being there and, and of course, Quinn. Thank you for, for being there, Dr. Quinn, right? And also, didn't we get a chance to talk to other folks that were in the same boat? And I think one of the things we heard somebody say earlier that, you know, we're all in this together, and that's how it feels like. We're helping everybody, we're, we're bringing our folks together, and we're touching the lives of so many people. So, I just wanted to congratulate you guys. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, so, we're having this sidebar conversation because you want me to wait on that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, cool. He's got something he wants me to talk about. So, I would say that February was the month of the virus. You already heard that we went to Washington DC, and I got to participate one day before I had to leave dinner on Monday night because I had come down with a virus. I did not eat another solid meal until Friday. And when I got back to work, I discovered, along with everybody else in our firm, that a computer virus had invaded our system, taking out our case management system. If you can imagine not having access to any student records, including currently enrolled, that's kind of the impact it had. We are still not recovered. But I want to recognize one person from Lone Star College, Link Elander, who in the middle of his own family crisis, took time out to talk to me and talk to our head of IT to help us come up with solutions and help figure out a direction. Part of that solution ended up being accelerating a migration to a completely new system by three months before we had our staff trained or the data ready to be migrated. It's been lots of fun. So, I did go to DC, I got to go to some of the meetings, and then I saw a lot of my hotel room.
I guess it's my turn. I have a whole list of things, but I will only, I will only mention two. On February nineteenth, I was invited to go to North Harris and do a Juneteenth activity. I didn't know, when I, when I got there, I didn't know the full scope, but when I arrived, I understand most of, all of the deans and et cetera was there, the president was there, a big room full of people. And I, I really enjoyed doing it. I enjoy mixing, you know, with people, and I think some, if not all, of the folks got a little bit out of it. I was also invited to tom ball. I haven't seen the video yet, but they put me on TV, and I did about a thirty-minute video on things similar to Juneteenth. And I'm excited about that particular video because when it comes out, I need to decide whether in my third life, I'm going to be a musician or an actor. So, and I owe both of them to Lone Star, but it was a pretty productive month. So, and I thank all my fellow trustees for being so actively involved, you know, in the community, you know, in doing things to make sure Lone Star's a drum major, you know, rather than a, rather than a follower. Okay, the, on the committee reports, when I first became a member of this board, trustee Linda Good mentioned an endowed scholarship for trustees. And she laid out what those guidelines, what those guidelines are. And I'm anxious to get the, to get the endowment fully funded as soon as possible. So, she's going to bring us up to date on where we are financially with that endowment. And the third purpose of it is to make sure that our new trustees know that we have it, and they will be cordially invited to participate based on the details that Linda's going to point out to us.
Thank you. Nicole, would you come to the podium to help me out, please? And I'm going to take the unusual step of standing down. So, as I understand, we need to fully fund it, is it fifteen thousand or twenty thousand?
Fifteen thousand is the minimum.
Fifteen thousand needs to be put in this. In case you're not clear, it's not a scholarship for trustees, but from trustees to students, okay? And fifteen thousand will fully fund it, and it'll go from there. We started this in 2014. We have seven years to fund it, is that right? So, we have, we haven't run out of time, and we're at about fifty-five or sixty percent funded, is that correct? So, you are all going to be witnesses that this is a folder that tells about the foundation. And inside the folder is a very special warning. It was made just for this endowment. And you're going to watch and handle the number of the board. And I want them to know that you can set it up to automatically be charged to your credit card, oh yes ma'am, or come out of your checking account, or however you want to do it. You can say you want a thousand dollars a month for X number of months. Is that too much?
No, but what, it's what they're...
I think originally, we calculated if nine board members fully participated, maybe something like sixteen hundred dollars a board member. Okay, some people who are no longer on the board have participated, some who have been on the board haven't. Some of you are new and are hearing about it for the first time. So, I encourage you, please let's get this funded, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, there, good job.
So, tell them what happens, if, if they contribute and we have the Board of Trustees Scholarship, I'll tell them what happens. Then we put your name up there in perpetuity. By the way, it's, we have a board over in the other, a really nice foundation. It's on the wall, actually. It's not a board. The entire wall is with donors, but if you do that, we'll put your, we will put your name in there so you can come back twenty years from now and see your name. Don't leave.
The other thing I forgot to mention, I participated in the golf tournament last week, didn't win a thing, but the foundation did. If I remember correctly, I think we raised a hundred forty thousand?
One forty-two.
Yeah, so which is a large sum of money, could be larger, but it's being put to a good purpose. You have anything to add to that on?
Start Gala's May fourth.
All right, good, thank you. Okay, thank both of you for a job well done. Helen, do we have any citizens wishing to speak to the board tonight? Okay.
You took one of the things off my list.
Yeah.
Good evening. I am John Bergduff, representing the American Federation of Teachers, with a little bit of a scratchy voice, my apologies. As you know, we speak to you almost every month advocating, advocating for policy and for employee rights. As a union, this is what we do and what we will always do. However, there is a great deal more about who we are and what we do than what you hear about on the first Thursday of the month. Last month, we introduced you to our scholarship recipient for this year. It had never occurred to us to talk about this program, but her story was so compelling, we knew you had to hear it. There is no way I can top her amazing story, but I'd like to take a few more minutes of your time to tell you about some additional things you may not know about AFT. First, all members of AFT are Lone Star employees. We are here because we want to participate in the mission of the college, and whether we are faculty or staff, we work with our students, participate on commu, on committees, and fully engage in the life of the college. None of us are outsiders, none of us take a salary from the union. We happen to believe that we can do more to make this a great place by joining our voices together. Second, the work we do ultimately benefits students. Faculty and staff who feel safe and respected in their employment will be freer to give of themselves for students. So, we believe that our work impacts students positively in an indirect way. But AFT also supports students in direct tangible ways, including the scholarship we endow. Here are more examples. Over the years, we have sponsored or partnered with the college to sponsor appearances by prominent speakers that most of our students would never have been able to hear otherwise. In the nineteen eighties, we brought the influential former Lieutenant Governor Bill Hovey to campus. In the two thousands, we co-sponsored a visit from Lech Valesa, former president of Poland and leader of solidarity. Last fall, we partnered with the Office of the General Counsel to bring Mexican-American history scholar Francisco Badarama to help our students to put the current immigration debate into perspective. A couple of years ago, we funded transportation costs for a student group traveling out of town. Our lobbying efforts to expand non-discrimination policies to include the transgender community benefit both employees and students. Although it is more indirect, resources we have provided to employees have freed them from outside worry so that they can serve students more effectively. These resources include workshops we have provided to all employees to help them manage student debt, and workshops we have provided for adjunct faculty and part-time staff to help them locate affordable health care options. A year and a half ago, we partnered with Texas AFT to provide several thousand dollars in grants to employees affected by Hurricane Harvey, and we provided funds through the college foundation to specifically help adjuncts. Alan Hall and I co-authored an article in this month's edition of our union newsletter, The Advocate, that gives more detail and more examples of work the AFT has done to help students. We invite you to read that article if you haven't already. In that article, we quote research that has been done elsewhere that shows that the presence and work of strong unions correlates to greater student success. We at AFT Lone Star are proud of the work we have done to support our employees, and we believe those efforts ultimately are helping our students, either directly or indirectly. We are proud of our members who work tirelessly, tirelessly every day, along with their colleagues, to support the mission of Lone Star College. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
And John, I'd like to thank you for your work in student success. And I'm sure that's going to make a difference. Thank you so much.
Thank you, it is our privilege. Thank you so much.
There was one thing I forgot to do earlier. Mario, would you stand up, please? I mean, they can't see you, otherwise you're like me. Mario is, I didn't have a chance to go, but I heard about a weekend activity that he was involved in, and two weeks ago I had planned to go, but I didn't show up. And I understand that along with his heavy workload, he works about fifteen, sixteen hours per day, he trained and completed a twenty-five mile marathon.
She made twenty-six point two?
Whatever. Well, if you can do twenty-five, you can definitely do twenty-six point two. But congratulations, and he, he didn't want me to do this, but I love when people do things outside of the box. And so, just as I was saying, maintain the momentum, I'll join you next year. Okay. Did I embarrass you, Mario? Okay, good, that's what I wanted to do. Okay, at this point, we need to, board members, we need to consider the consent agenda. We have thirteen items on the agenda, and counsel, correct me if I do something wrong here. We have, item number four is being pulled, and item thirteen will be considered separately. Board members, are there any other items that you would like to have considered separately? If not, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt items, to approve at least items are one, two, three, five through twelve. It's been moved and properly seconded, that we approve those items. Are there, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we will now consider item thirteen. Mario?
Yes, sir, thank you. On behalf of the administration, we'd like to recommend an amendment to the appendix, specifically Ms. DeMonica Junius has requested to withdraw from consideration for an employment contract. And so, we would like to recommend striking her name from the proposed employment contracts under that action item.
Okay. All right, thank you. Board members, you've heard the, the explanation from our General Counsel. May I have a motion? So moved? It's been moved and properly seconded, that we adopt item thirteen, approve item thirteen?
As amended.
As amended? All those in favor, vote by the usual sign?
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it. At this point in time, we will have the financial report.
And board, just so, you remember the last time we said we would put this up on the screen so that you could see the reports a little, a little better?
Good.
Yes, now I don't have to tell you what page to try to find. So, I do have this in a presentation now. So, what I, let me tell you, what I have up here is just kind of some snippet summary pieces. It's not the full thing, you do have the full thing in your board packets to review. So, this is a summary of the financial report, which are financial statements for month ended January thirty-first, 2019. So, first, our revenues collected as of January thirty-first is two hundred and sixty-nine million, which is seventy point six percent of the budgeted revenues. And you can see compared to prior years, this is a healthy collection rate compared to the same point in time in prior fiscal years.
What made it so much better, I wonder?
What was that?
You said this was a healthy collection rate?
Well, it's healthy, it's, it's in line. It's not, it's around the same as it's been at the same point in time in prior years. Yeah, so that's why I said healthy. It's not below, it's not significantly above though either.
Right, okay.
So, for expenditures, as of January thirty-first, we had a hundred and thirty-eight million of expenditures, this is thirty-seven point six percent. And you can tell compared to prior years, we're going to have to kind of always ignore the 2017 to eighteen year because of Hurricane Harvey. But looking at prior years, even there, this is a relatively low expenditure level compared to the same point in time. So, looking at the revenues budget compared to our forecast, currently, we are forecasting in total three million net revenues below budget. The majority of this comes from being five million dollars forecasted below budget in tuition and fees due to, we've discussed previously, negative enrollment growth in both fall and spring semesters and some additional downward trends, along with that in non-credit revenues. But of this five million, three point two million was consciously offset in corresponding planned expenditure reductions in reaction to what we were seeing in the enrollments coming in below zero percent growth. So, once you combine being three million net revenues below budget, but then also the planned reductions in expenditures in reaction to this, it's about a two hundred thousand dollar net improvement to the reserve. So, this is how we are sort of throughout the year managing to keep ourselves at budget. On the expenditure side, we are forecasting four point seven six million net expenditures below budget, and of course, the majority of this is that three point two million that I just mentioned of planned expenditure reductions in direct response to what we were seeing in enrollments and how that would impact tuition and fee revenues. Additionally, you see here, we had also discussed earlier in the year, when the board approved our insurance coverage levels, that was a one point two million dollar increase in the cost of insurance to increase those levels. And we had identified other offsets to help cover that.
I want to make sure they understand though, we're coming in, we will come in below budget unless some catastrophe occurs.
Yes. Yeah, so, I mean, overall, it's all a positive impact to the bottom line here, so maybe I need to reverse the order of my slides and show this first. The impact of those revenues and expenditure forecasted variances on our projected cash reserves. So, there, what we had, when the budget was approved, it was to, the goal was to end the year at a seventeen percent reserve. And right now, with these forecasts, we are forecasting to end the year at seventeen point nine percent. Now, still, I would say the majority of this comes from our beginning cash reserves being higher than we had budgeted. But between that and the combined effects of everything else that I just went through... else that I just went through, we're forecasting 17.9% to end the year, August 31st, yeah, Fund 35, Harvey Recovery, there we have 31, we are now at 31.4 million in actual expenditures, 26.9 of this is for Kingwood, and you can see the breakdown by college there, right, University Park did also have some damage, so there's a million dollars there. But that is where we stand so far in terms of expenditures for Hurricane Harvey. And now for FEMA reimbursement, because I felt like maybe I should have something to say, we've made a chart. We do, we do have from FEMA, the different stages that our submissions need to go through, they're sort of numbered 1 through 6, I know there's some duplicate numbers, a couple of different sort of substeps, but you can see there sort of rough amounts of our submissions in each category, with the majority of which still being in step number one. So that gave me a few more words to say about FEMA reimbursement. So we're still working it, we're still working it, they came back to us with some questions this week that we're trying to get answers for to them. It's kind of the usual, we hear nothing for long periods of time, and then all of a sudden, we get questions that they want answers to very quickly. But we're going to keep working it, and yes, I am still having, following up on conversations with Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee's office, so I am still talking with them as well to see if any assistance can be provided there. Also, they have now changed our project delivery manager for the fourth time. But what I'm hearing is so far, the new person is much more responsive than the prior person, so maybe that's not a bad thing, but still, it's the fourth person now.
So you want to go back to LeAnn's book about grit and perseverance? This is a who can wait who out the longest game.
I'm good there. Good, good.
But you know, you know, the runaround, you get the, some of the congresspeople say they get the same runaround.
Oh, yeah.
Nobody knows, nothing about, oh, no, I said nothing. You can get very little data out of people.
Imagine you're a homeowner.
And so that concludes my report, and then also, the construction report is provided to you in your board book.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Excellent job. That's much better. Okay. Before we adjourn our meeting, are there any future agenda items that you would like to see on the agenda next month? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.